Not there, on the road with the, uh, with the family. It's, uh, it's good to, good to be with you in, uh, in voice and in spirit and, uh, Councilmember Bright Cruz, Fissa Kelly, and, uh, Councilmember McKay. Always a pleasure, town staff, wonderful town staff. Good evening, members of the public. And before we get started, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take roll here in just a minute, but I know that the Marines are in the, uh, in the house and I know that they're gonna wanna talk about this wonderful Toys for Tots program. And, uh, from the bottom of my heart, and I think I expressed this, uh, on behalf of everybody, thank you for all that you do, uh, every single day to protect us, to protect this wonderful country that we live in. We can't, uh, thank you enough. And if you don't mind, if maybe I can get you to come up and lead us in the pledge, after we, uh, get finished with the roll call, we would absolutely be honored.
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, uh, Russell, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Doug McKay.
Here.
Councilmember Freddie Fissa Kelly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Steve Bright Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
I am, uh, here and, uh, present, and if those, uh, wonderful, uh, members of, uh, the, uh, the military, the, uh, the Marines would lead us in the pledge, again, we'd be honored.
Marines rise, face colors, and salute.
Again, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. Thank you, guys. God bless the Marines and God bless all our members of the armed services that take care of us every single day. We, uh, can't tell you how much, uh, we appreciate all you, uh, do on our behalf and on this country's behalf. And with that, uh, with that being, uh, said, um, it's, uh, very, very difficult, obviously, by, uh, by phone to, uh, conduct this, uh, meeting, so I'd like to maybe see if I can get, uh, one of our wonderful council members to volunteer on my behalf to, uh, chair the meeting, uh, while I'll, uh, I'm not there, uh, physically. And, uh, the thought process is, is maybe Councilmember Bright Cruz, I know as Vice Mayor, it wasn't that long ago that you conducted the meeting, but I know Councilmember Fissa Kelly and Councilmember McKay are just as capable, so I'll leave that up to you if it's okay with you all.
Yeah.
I choose Bright Cruz.
Bright Cruz.
Uh, you know, I'd be happy to. Thank you, I appreciate it.
It looks like, it looks like, uh, it's you, Steve, and, uh, thank you, I appreciate it very much. Well, I'll stand by and, uh, if I have any comments, I'll certainly butt in and, uh, and thank you all very, very much.
Great, thank you, Mayor, appreciate that, uh, the introduction and getting us started out. Um, with that, just to follow up on what the mayor was saying, uh, would like to, uh, invite Roy Guy to come up and, uh, and, and bring the presentation for Toys for Tots to us. Thank you.
This presentation is for your township and your people of this township and the council members that have done with us since, uh, 2012, since we have gotten together.
Can we have you speak into that mic just a little bit better, if you can? You can take it out of there and hold it if you'd like.
That's all right. Since 2012, um, your township has gotten together with Toys for Tots, with the Marine Corps League of Broward Law Enforcement Detachment 549. Um, and our appreciation, it, there's no words that we can say for it. You guys have stepped up and your community has stepped up far beyond that we could recognize, and we want to keep it going. That's why we're here in force tonight to show the support that we want to have with you and our relationship with your township, and we will be forever in your debt, just as much as we feel this way for the kids, for Toys for Tots. Uh, the second thing that we do with this, Toys for Tots ends at December 20th, but we keep it going, and your township keeps it going until, like, January 20th or whatever, and we go down to Chris Everett's Hospital, down to Cancer Center, and hand-deliver the extra toys and give the kids a second Christmas. And I really appreciate it, thank you so much. We have a small certificate and a Toys for Tots coin that started in 2012 to present the council and the township, and we thank you again so much.
Great, well, thank you, we really, yeah. Just, just, thank you.
Yeah, should we, absolutely. Let's get a picture, photo. Why don't you come on down there and...
Kind of line up here in front of the days. If you call the receptionist to town hall, she can give you a copy of the picture. Mr. Yellow Shirt, maybe you can stand in front of Mr. White Shirt, I don't think he'll be too much of an display. There you go. Great, all right, one more time with the head shaking and all the big smiles. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Russell, thank you so much. Give me a call on anything, all right?
All right. Okay, uh, item number four is public comment. Okay, no public comment tonight? Yeah, is that, uh, that's what happens, Mayor, when you're not here. Nobody, uh, nobody has anything to say, you know? They want to talk to the mayor.
Steve, they got nobody to talk about, I guess.
All right, so item number five is, uh, board reports. Have any, uh, chairman of any of the boards that would like to, uh, report? We're cruising right along. All right, number six, uh, council member reports, comments.
Yeah, I guess I'll start off. Uh, really, there's not that much to report, other than we do have a lot of good news on our fishing hole park. It's, uh, really removing, uh, we got a contractor in there right now clearing the exotics on that, uh, up front, and, uh, he's not only cleared a lot of exotics, but there's a lot of his old, uh, plastic and stuff, but by tomorrow, he's gonna start hauling that out of there and we're gonna be able to spread some of that fill and clear that one section. And then fortunately, I was up there with, in December, was there today, and she told me, and we've heard this, I know, week after we, they're gonna start the bathroom Monday, so we're gonna keep our fingers crossed again that he'll be there. He was with her today, so maybe that's something, but, uh, we're moving right along. I think, uh, in December made a little more on this than I do, but it looks like the guy has pretty well got all the trees that he wants out of that back area. I was back there myself with him, and, uh, there's a lot of stuff in there, December. I think we really need to know if he's gonna do any more back in there. But other than that, uh, I don't thi, I, I think in the near future, we can see that start to close up, too. But, uh, we, we're still, that's what we're clearing the land now, we got a lot of fill in there, and Emily may, can tell you further where we're at on the, we've got the horse trail to do next and the mitigation area to do, but, uh, it's, uh, by the end of this week, you'll see a big improvement when they get all that trash that's in that middle section out of there and, uh, cleaned up, but, uh, but it's looking good, it's looking good. That's it.
Great, great, thank you, Freddie. Doug?
I'm good.
Okay, um, I really...
We're gonna make a record tonight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much either, I just, uh, just a quick comment that, uh, follow up on what we said last week, uh, that, uh, the folks from Broward County are working on the light out there at, uh, Griffin and I-75, so I am hopeful that we're gonna have some positive things out there. I really appreciate them, um, and their partnership on it, so pleased about that. All right, um, the next item is legal comments.
I have none tonight.
All right, wow. Administrative comments?
The party's over.
Ah, there we go, I knew we were saving the time for something.
I, I will be brief. Just some good news, I'm not sure if you all noticed when you came in, but the BSO surplus vehicles are gone. They were picked up yesterday, finally. As soon as I have the advance information on when that auction will be held, and we'll have that information online, we'll certainly make that available, uh, to the public. Just a reminder, before our next council meeting on June 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll be celebrating the town's birthday and building dedication for Town Hall. Got a little plaque dedication for the front of the building scheduled for 6:00, and, uh, there'll be some food and some, uh, some nice surprises. So it'll be a real, a real nice evening before the council meeting, so I certainly invite everybody to come out for that, there's some invitations on the, the back table there. Uh, you may have noticed on that, that median improvement out front that's gone on forever, uh, Broward County dropped off some management of traffic barrels and barricades and things today. Uh, I'm hopeful that they're gonna start on that tomorrow, but I don't know if that division works, a four-day week or a five-day week, uh, but they have told us via email, and we're gonna try to hold them to it, that it'll be done by next Thursday. So, uh, if they get it by June 12th, I'll be a happy guy, so we're heading in the right direction on that front, on that front. Uh, we heard from our Congresswoman, Debbie Wasserman Schultz, she will be hosting a small business workshop over at the Broward County Convention Center on Saturday, May 31st. We've got some flyers here that we printed up, we have those on the back table, and we've got, um, uh, we'll do an email blast, and we'll get that out to our, certainly to our small business owners who may have some interest in attending that. And last but not least, uh, as you all know, property values come out from the property appraiser officially on June 1st. We did hear from, uh, Broward County Property Appraiser Lori Parish this week, and we've got a, what it looks like a tentative number, it's not a final number, but it looks like our property values will be up about 5.6%.
Wow.
And, uh, in checking with Mr. Sherwood, that would be, uh, the largest increase in a number of years, so, uh, you know, the economy is, is getting better and our property values are bouncing back, and that's certainly very good news, and, uh, Mr. Councilmember, that concludes my report for this evening.
Great, thank you, Andy, appreciate that.
Yeah, Steve, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Great, excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Any, uh, any comment on that motion? Any public comment on that motion? Public comment closed. Uh, Russell, if you can, uh, read the, take the roll.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, appreciate it, Doug. Okay, item number nine, ordinance on the second reading, Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Bright Cruz. Uh, this is the second reading of an ordinance to approve the floodplain, uh, ordinance that was, I'll say passed down from FEMA to the state, to Broward County, to us, as we covered during the first reading on that. It's not something that we have a whole lot of say or, or decision-making in the process. It is something that would, that's necessary for council to pass in order for our residents to be able to qualify and purchase flood insurance. There are a couple of que, minor questions that came up on that, that I, I do want to address, uh, for you, just very briefly. Obviously, if council has any further questions, we'll, uh, we'll include that, but there is no ag exemption on, on, uh, the requirements from this ordinance, uh, which is very similar to current policy in state statute on fill and drainage-related issues. Uh, it, it certainly is something that, that, that needs to, uh, needs to follow that policy, and, uh, I know the town engineer is working with CAP and Melgren as far as, uh, policy on, on notifications for those kinds of things, just to make sure that, that we're on the same page and we're able to follow that. Uh, there was a question, I think, a further question, as to who the, the, uh, the floodplain administrator is, and I will tell you that as the town administrator, I am the floodplain administrator by default. Uh, I will not make certainly decisions on that front without consulting with the town engineer. Uh, obviously, it's, uh, like everything else around here, this is a team sport, and we'll, we'll do what we need to do, but ultimately, that would be my signature in those cases, and that's some questions that had come up that I did want to answer for you. I don't know if council has any further questions.
Make a motion approval.
Second.
Do we need to read in the...
Yeah, we do.
An ordinance by the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Code of Ordinances to repeal ordinance number 2004-11 in Town of Southwest Ranches Code of Ordinances, Part 2, Chapter 4, Buildings and Building Regulations. Article 2, Flood Damage Prevention in Its Entirety, to adopt a new ordinance, 2014-, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a floodplain administrator, to adopt procedures and criteria for development in flood hazard areas and for other purposes, providing for se, for applicability, a repealer, severability, and an effective date.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion, a first and a second. Um, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Any further questions, comments? Okay, Russell?
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item number 10, uh, Russell, you want to read that into the record?
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, directing the town administrator and the town attorney to prepare a non-binding straw poll referendum question concerning how to fund the town's transportation, surface, and drainage ongoing rehabilitation program, providing ballot language as delineated in Exhibit A, attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, directing the town administrator to request that this non-binding straw poll question be placed on the November 4th, 2014, general election ballot to enable the town's electorate to cast a straw vote on this matter, directing the town clerk to provide proper notice for the straw ballot, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Um, so, Andy, you want to give us the overview on this?
Yeah, if I may, council member, this is similar to last item, this is the second reading on an ordinance that was discussed at the last meeting. This is about putting a TIS-DOR initiative, uh, on the, the ballot in November. There was some discussion and request from council to change the, the language within the question, you were concerned that there was some, uh, potentially some confusion. Uh, this now reads, "Funding for the town's transportation, surface, and drainage ongoing rehabilitation program. The town will select either a millage rate increase or a special assessment to fund the staged resurfacing of town streets and roadways, included related drainage improvements. A millage rate increase would be part of the municipality's overall millage rate, the funds would be completely segregated, and is considered tax deductible. A special assessment would appear as a specific, non-ad valorem tax item on, on the annual tax bill, and is not generally considered tax deductible." The question then is, I am in favor of funding the town's transportation, surface, and drainage ongoing rehabilitation program, or TIS-DOR, through the use of a millage rate increase over a special assessment. So a yes vote would be for ad valorem, and no vote would be for special assessment.
Great, thank you, Andy. Keith, any comments on that, or...
No, this was amended, I think pursuant to yourself, Councilmember Bright Cruz, and we followed the form that you suggested, and I believe we sent it to the supervisor's office already, and there's no issues with it, so we're good to go as long as the council approves.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion on this?
Make a motion approval.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and I appreciate that. I, you know, well, let's open it, I, I would like to make one, one quick comment. You know, as we've gone through this process, I'm just speaking for myself, um, and kind of weighed the, the pros and the cons of, of these two, a special assessment versus a millage, um, there are pros and cons to both, but, um, based on the, the costs that are involved with the special assessment, um, the restrictions that are associated with a special assessment, um, I personally have come down, and, and the tax deductibility that's not available for a special assessment, um, I've come down pretty strongly personally for myself, not speaking for the town in this particular case, but, um, that the millage rate, if it can be guarded, and I, and I'm been told that it can be guarded, it can be segregated just to this project, I feel pretty strongly that, uh, the millage rate is the proper and, uh, proper way to go. And so my only question, and I say this ahead of time because I would like feedback from the residents on this particular thought and issue, um, on whether it makes sense to put this item on the ballot and, and allow it to go either way, or whether this is maybe an item that, uh, there is pretty clear direction on what's the best way to go for the town, and we should just make that, uh, make that determination and not put this on the ballot. So I'm not proposing one way or the other, I wanted to throw that out and make that comment because I would like your feedback.
Let, let me join you in supporting you in that, in everything you just said.
Great, thank you.
Because I think that's the most sensible way to go about this.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Anyhow, I just want to throw, join you on that and, because that's kind of what I was gonna say, so I'll just ditto what you said.
Thanks. All right, so, uh, let's open up to public comment.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Avenue. Last month I recommend, or the last meeting I recommended that you throw out the option for special assessment, even though it's against my best interests, um, I wouldn't have to pay if, if you went with special assessments. I still think it's what's best for the town, and I'm more worried about confusion at the ballot box. If people have both options and they're not mutually exclusive, they can vote for both, so throw those out. Then on top of it, I don't think people know the nuances, so who's gonna educate folks on, on the difference between the two? Uh, it's almost the flip of a coin if you put it out there, or you may end up with special assessments because nobody wants a new tax. I mean, as a matter of course. So if you, I mean, frame the question a little differently, are you for or against fixing our roads using a millage rate increase, you probably would get an accurate beat on what the town's residents want. If you put it out there the way it's been discussed, I think, uh, you might get less than desirable results. Thank you.
Steve, I agree with you, with your, that concept, because it's simpler, easier, and it's tax deductible. And as Bob pointed out, which is about, it does create confusion, and I don't think you'd get the, what you call desired result, and if you, you have a specific, uh, result that you would like, I think it's better to work it through the council than throwing it out to the public. Thank you.
I don't feel too strongly one way or another, but I really kind of wonder whether you should be doing this at all. Are you gonna educate a couple thousand people on the ins and outs of taxing and on need for various types of roads and what's going on? Frankly, I think you guys were elected as representatives of the town to get involved in depth, find out what to do, and then figure out what to do. Now, what, I'll go with that, that we'll leave it up to you because you're the guys with the, that have the knowledge to do it. Uh, if we need to do it, let's take the heat and do it. Thank you.
Prince Valletta, Mayor, Councilman, uh, I think the special assessment would be unfair to a good majority of the people in the town. And the other thing is that, uh, I think in the straw ballot, you should give an indication of how much it's gonna cost, and in, if possible, what the periods of payment would be, whether 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. But I think, as been pointed out, I think this has to be an educational straw ballot, because many of the people would, wouldn't know what the difference between ad valorem and a, a special assessment. And the other, the other day, they'd say, well, the woman says to me, if I had a special assessment, I got a road on two sides. I get assessed for both sides? But these, these are little innuendos that would come up with the difference, methods of paying for it, and the biggest thing is how much and if they want to pay for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I personally don't have enough information right now to, to go either way on it, but what I'm thinking is that you're opening a can of worms because you're not putting the third option on there. And the third option is having it as a yes or no on each, each one. If it comes out no, we don't want anything done, and a majority of the people in town say that, what are you gonna do? But you're not doing that, you're saying, pick your poison. You're either gonna get this way, or you're gonna get that way. That is not what a straw poll does, and I've never seen one that doesn't say, we, we want to do it this way, yes or no. And if you don't do it that way, and say only pick your poison, you're setting yourself up for an implosion, as far as that is concerned. And that's the only thing I'm saying. There's gotta be that third option, don't do a damn thing. And that is exactly what you need to put on there, to see if the town is going to say, pick our poison, or don't do a damn thing. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Public comment closed. Um, Mayor, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I certainly don't want to leave you out, this is an important, uh, issue. I was wondering if, if you have any thoughts or anything you'd like to, uh, contribute to the discussion?
Maybe we lost it.
We lost them?
Those of you that came in late, the mayor's attending by telephone.
Any, yeah, Freddie?
Yeah, uh, actually, from what, uh, Noel said, it's really not gonna happen. Uh, we as the council, just like Bob was talking about, have the responsibility, we know those roads have to be done, and they're gonna get done, you know? Uh, as far as I'm concerned, as far as my vote goes, uh, we're gonna pave the roads, and we're gonna do it as least, uh, harm to anybody, but if, there's no other way we can do it. We've got to pave the roads, and we've got the option. I think the straw vote is a good thing, we can get an opinion of what those people do, but, uh, what he says if they vote no, that doesn't mean that we can't go ahead and do it, because we have the power to do it. We can, uh, we can spend any money in this town, we want to, without vote of approval, and it depends on how, what we put up for collateral. And if we put up ad valorem taxes, we have to go to vote of the people, but if we don't use the ad valorem taxes and we use the fees, we don't have to go to vote of the people. That's the truth. And this town, ever since we've been a town, has never pledged anything but the fees, so that's why it's never gonna vote of the people. But, uh, that's the law, and Keith may, yep, you see here?
Yep.
He may tell me I'm wrong, but I think I went to school on it. Fortunately, we, when we're on the council, we go to League of Cities, and they have a lot of these seminars, and one of the seminars we went to, I asked that particular question to the lady who had the seminar. I says, you know, we, we were a town, we borrowed 5 million people, $5 million, then we borrowed $2 million, then we borrowed $12 million, and it never went to vote of people. And she says, well, it depends what you put up for collateral. So, and I seen John Canada later, I said, John, what did we put up for collateral for those money? He says, the fees. And if you look at our records, that's what we've done ever since we've attended town. Uh, and I really thought, in most cases, it needed to go before the vote of the people. But I tell you, on this particular case, we don't have any choice. We got roads that are deteriorating, it's gotta be fixed, and if the people try to tell us no, I as one person up here would petition our council to go ahead and do what we have to do, bite the bullet and do it. We're gonna have to, we're gonna, and how we pay it, we're gonna try to do as, as least harmful to the people we can, but people, there's five of us up here, but I can tell you, one person vote right now is gonna be, we're, we're gonna get it done, one way or the other, so. But, uh, I agree, let's go out and see what they're gonna tell us first, but not what, I don't think we would have anything over our head that would have to worry about them telling us. I think our people are smart enough out there to know that they don't want to run on, on bumpy roads all their life. It's gotta be done, it's part of being a town. We def, we voted to be a town, and that's all the responsibilities we took on, so we gotta do it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Freddie. Um, Mayor, I wanted to, I know this is an important issue, I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to kind of weigh in on, on your thoughts on...
No, absolutely, uh, absolutely, Steve, I, I appreciate it and kind of echo a lot of the things... I appreciate it and kind of echo a lot of the things that you all are saying as well. There's no question that this is an issue that has to be addressed. And it's not one particular place in the town in regards to our roads and conditions of the roads. It's throughout the town and in many different locations. And in the process of coming up with a mechanism to fund it, I know that putting this together, we wanted to give our residents an opportunity to weigh in and determine what they feel is the best mechanism to fund this project. And the more you take a look at the special assessment with the issues and the costs, the more I have a difficult time supporting that as a mechanism to fund this project. Make there no mistake that before I would ever approve anything, and I know Vince had talked about it previously, and I don't remember who else, but we need to know exactly what we're talking about here. We need to know exactly the costs, the roads that are going to be approved, improved. We need to know what the millage rate increase would be for an extended, for one period of time. And then on top of that, and I think that you had touched on this, Steve, previously, we have to let our residents know that this millage rate is specifically, and it's earmarked specifically, and the revenue generated from this increase in our millage rate is going to go specifically to the improvement of the roads. And once that's completed, that we go back and reduce it by the amount, if we decide to go this way, but reduce it by the amount that we approve to fund this project. So, like I said, I'm evaluating the special assessment and some of those obstacles and costs associated with that mechanism. I have some serious concerns as well, but we know we have to do it. And I'm, I'll go along with whatever you all want to go along with.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So Doug, did you, anything else?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we were put in office to make calls on these decisions. I think we are educated and smart enough that, and close enough to the community, being that we're a small town, that we can explain the position, why and how we did it, and the procedure and the protection things in play related to that money, to increasing the millage to do that project, that I think that we need to make that call. I think, I don't see that we should take the time, the effort, the money to add that on the ballot while we're as close to the community as we are, that I think it's an impossibility when you sit in this position to make everybody happy all of the time. It just can't be done, and we all know that.
Right.
So I think it's evenly, equally balanced by doing it through the millage process than doing it any other way. Because when you get into the private roads and the easements and the rightaways and all this other stuff and the crazy stuff and somebody that's going to fight you over, well, you know, I shouldn't have to pay for this or pay for that. You know, everybody in town uses all the roads, whether you're going to somebody else's house or driving through town or whatever you're doing. So I think in the millage process and that procedure and that way and at that rate, everybody shares equally. So I would tell you that I'm in support of it, just us do what we got to do, not put it on the ballot for a choice.
Great.
And sell it to the public the way we can, same way we got elected.
Right. Yep. Appreciate that. Yeah, I'm of the same mind. This project is not an optional project. And this is a project, you know, our roads are deteriorating. You talk to different engineers, you get different road life estimates, anywhere from 10 years to 25 years. The bottom line is that we've been a town now for 14 years, and we've really done nothing. So if all our roads were brand new, which is far from true, if all the roads were brand new and we became a town, we've already halfway to the point where we would need to replace them all anyway. But we all know that most of those roads are significantly older than we are as a town. So this isn't an optional project. It's an expensive project, but it's not an optional project. It's something that if we're going to exist as a town, we've got to have roads. This particular ballot issue was not even asking, do we need to do the project? Because similar to what a lot of comments made tonight, you know, we were elected to make those decisions, and whether they're popular or unpopular, to do what's best for this town in the long run, and this is clearly one of them. This ballot question was basically how to pay for it. And I'm of the same mind as similar to what Doug has said, the mayor said, I think Freddie, what you were alluding to as well, that at this point, the clear, the fairest, the least expensive, the, you know, all the optimal attributes are really pointing towards a millage increase. If it can be, and they tell me it can be, limited just to this and similar to what the mayor said, that when this project is over, this millage increase goes away. And that needs to be part of it, needs to be part of it. So I'm of the inclination, I don't know, Keith, if it's appropriate to take the vote and vote against it or just to not take action on this, if that's the consensus. I don't want to speak for the whole council, but that's what I'm hearing, is basically the consensus of councils.
There's a motion to second, so I'd rather call the vote, have it called down, and the ordinance fails if there's no other motions.
Okay. Any other comments?
Keith, I'm not against putting it on the ballot whatsoever. I think it's a smart thing to put it on the ballot, but I think what we need to do before it hits that ballot is to make sure we got all the facts and figures out to the public. And I don't want to see it on that ballot because there's nothing worse you can do. You go, you get a ballot that asks long, you're trying to read it. But I think we need, I've seen some preliminary figures, and the figures, if I put them out here, Marty, if I'm wrong, you want to correct me, please. If it's a $10 million project, we're looking at 1 mil. If it's a $20 million project, like it could be, then I guess we'd be looking at 2 mil. So I think those two figures need to be, make sure that people understand what we're going to do before they even, you know, they go into the bowl. But I think that there may be options. Maybe if it's a $20 million project, we may not be able to do it all in one. We may do it in two or something like that. But I know the first figure we were working with was 10 million, but our new engineer has told us that it's going to be very difficult to do that project at 10 million, you know? So that's something, too, that's changed some of the figures. But I think the main thing is, I think the public needs to get as much information out there before this comes up, make sure that when they go to the polls, they really understand it's not nothing we just want to do, it's something we have to do, and we want to give them as much information as we can give them.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I definitely think that the effort here needs to be on education. That is like, similar, Doug, what you said. I mean, like, we're campaigning, you know, for a seat, we need to be campaigning for this project because it's so critical to our town, and it's not going to be the most popular thing in town to do. And it's just something that needs to be done. And so I think education is an important part of it. Freddie, I just don't know, I don't see a question to put in front of the voters because I see that this is a project that has to get done, and so I think that we need to make that call. And looking at how to fund it, which was what the question was we were talking about here, I originally thought that, you know, hey, that's a good thing to put in front of the voters, for them to have a choice on. But frankly, it's become very, very clear to me that there's a right choice and a wrong choice here. And I would rather take the heat and make the right choice that I know is best for the town than to be put in a spot, frankly, where through some misinformation or something like that, the straw poll chooses what I feel pretty strongly is not the right choice. And then what do I have a choice to do? I either have a choice of going against, you know, what the voters have asked for, which I don't ever want to do, or doing what I think is not in the best interest of the town, which I don't want to do, you know? So it really puts us between a rock and a hard place. I think it's something we just need to make the right decision, and that's why I'm not really in favor of having this on the ballot.
Hey, Steve, I go either way on that. I mean, you know how I feel on that, if it would make them feel better putting it on the ballot. Bottom line, you and I know we've got to make the final decision on it. And if I'm ready to go that route, so if I don't, as far as not putting it on the ballot, I can go with that.
We have a town newsletter. Let's use it.
Great. Yep. Yep. All right. So any other comments? Call if you can call the vote.
Councilmember McKay?
No.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
No.
I'm just saying we don't want it on the ballot.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brighter?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Great.
That was a no.
All right. Thank you. Item number 11. We can read that into the record.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting a donation from the Astronite Parks Foundation in the amount of $22,000. Approving change orders to the Rolling Oaks Barn renovation contract for upgrades to ceiling and floor installations by East Coast Builders and Developers Corp. for an amount not to exceed $28,201.25. Approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2013, 2014 budget for this project, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Great. Thank you.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. As you all recall, when we originally went out to bid on the barn renovations, it was structured in kind of various levels. We had basics and we had upgrades. And so we went out for our bid so that based on what response we got back, we could purchase going forward what we could afford. Early on in the process, there were some upgrades that were identified that would require early approval in order to include those renovations. One being the tongue and groove ceiling as opposed to the acoustical tiles, which were originally spec. The second would be instead of going from a concrete floor to a polished concrete, which is certainly a significant improvement. Those are both decisions that need to be made very early on in the process. So the discussion on that did go before the Parks Board. The Parks Board has endorsed both of these recommended improvements. The cost of those two upgrades minus the adjustment we got for the acoustical tile is $28,201. Astronite and the Astronite Parks Foundation has stepped up and has agreed to donate $22,000 of the $28,201 total. That leaves a balance of really $201. The original, the budget for this item, for the barn renovations, the town budgeted $356,000. The original quote came in, which you had awarded at $350,000. So we've got about $6,000 available there. What we're asking you to do this evening, this resolution, would pull a little bit from the capital improvement reserves in order to offset that and create a 2.5% contingency. So it'll offset the additional $200 and give us just a little bit of breathing room, about $3,600 breathing room for some other small contingencies that may or may not come up. Anything unspent from that would be returned to the capital projects reserves. And certainly, any upgrades beyond that, anything else to go out through this process, would come back before council for your consideration at that point. But certainly, with $28,000 in cost for these upgrades and the Astronite Parks Foundation picking up 22, staff recommends council approval.
Great. Thank you. Any comments?
Do you want us to go forward to public?
Yeah. Open it up to public comment.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. Thank you, Astronite and the Astronite Parks Foundation. You guys do wonderful work, and this is how it shows. I just had one question about it. I love the idea of a tongue and groove ceiling because I hate these ceilings. But these ceilings also provide insulation benefit. Is the contractor going to put anything between the tongue and groove and the roof deck to insulate? Just a question.
Yes. Well, you've got somebody in the audience can answer for you.
Yeah, Councilmember, if I may, Frank Anzalone from East Coast Builders is the contractor of record, but George Morris from PHI is certainly part of the project and is on Frank's subcontractor list and may be able to speak to some of those questions.
And a resident.
Yeah, Astronite, 5480 Southwest 178th Avenue. Mr. Mayor and Council, on behalf of the Astronite Parks Foundation, it gives me great pleasure to contribute $22,000 to enhancing of the design of the proposed creation of our community center from the existing Rolling Oaks Barn. This brings a total contribution to the project to $37,000. We are only able to do this because of the support of the community at large, and to date, the foundation has been able to contribute over $50,000 to various projects in the town. With continued community support, we will be able to support new projects as they are developed, thanks to our supporters now and in the future.
Great. Thank you, Astronite. Yeah, you know, this is really what it's all about. And the foundation and all the great things that they do is projects like this that need an extra boost, need something special, and it's in parks all across our town, you know, whether it's the playground equipment at the Country Estates Park or the Rolling Oaks Barn or all the other projects that you all have done. It's, this is what it's about. This is why we contributed to it. And we just really so much appreciate Astronite, your time and effort, but also the committee that, we know there's a big committee that's putting in a lot of time and effort on this, working tirelessly, planning these events and putting the energy and thought and efforts behind it. So very much appreciated. Our town, our whole town appreciates it, and this is, it's a great honor to be able to sit here and have that, you know, presented to us. So thank you. Yeah, Freddie?
Yeah, well, really, I'm not going to speak so much on a motion. I just want to say something here tonight, and I hope I don't offend somebody if I miss names. But, you know, I can think back when they were going to tear this barn down. And if it hadn't have been for people in this room, George Morris, Astronite, and Mary Gay ain't here, I don't know why she's not here, but she, but they've come a long way. I know, I can remember, they were talking about tearing it down, and now we're getting ready to have something, we'll be here for a long time. And I think these people need a hand because they've done it right.
No, I'm good. Listen, I'm thrilled it's underway and moving and rocking and rolling, and hopefully we'll have it done before our year end and have a nice little party out there. So look forward to it. I'm thrilled.
Excellent. Very good. Mayor, did you want to make a comment on this?
Ditto what everybody said, Steve, and thank you, Astronite and the Astronite Parks Foundation. And you've just done some remarkable work, and here's a confirmation of that with regard to your contribution to this project. And we appreciate you and all that you're doing on the town's behalf. We just really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. All right. With that, let's take the vote.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brighter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right. Very good. Item number 12, approval of the minutes, April 24th.
Council, for your reference, the minutes had a brief modification. So the minutes you'll be approving tonight are the ones that are handed to you separately. The highlighted change was the correction. It was just who first the motion and who was the second. The first altered and the second.
Make a motion, approve as amended.
Second.
Any public comment? Public comment closed. Any further comment? Call the roll.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brighter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Great. All right.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Great job, Steve. Great job. I'm standing. It's better that I'm not there for crying out loud. You guys are...
I don't know, Mayor. It happens every time you're not here. I don't know. I'm starting to wonder.
Hey, Mayor, have a great weekend.
Weekend, thank you.
Yes, enjoy your family.